I'd like to call to order the work session agenda on January 8th, 2018. It's now 5:00 PM and we are all present. So we'll go on down to the items. We have two items on the agenda. Again, counsel, I'd like to remind you to refrain from asking questions until the staff presentation is complete. We have 3.1, "Staff will provide counsel with information in order to receive feedback and direction hosting a community shred-a-thon event." This item, the item will be presented at this point, 3.1, by Deputy Chief Jimmy Rodriguez. Officer Rodriguez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and counsel. At a recent council meeting, council members had expressed an interest in exploring a shred-a-thon event. So tonight, I'm here to provide you information on a community shred-a-thon event that can coincide with tax return, but also promote identity theft. After the presentation, obviously, I would love to hear any input or any recommendations that you guys might have. And with that, we'll get started with the presentation. All right. So the presentation will contain information on the following: some national statistics, other cities and agency events that are happening around town, our proposed Goodyear shred-a-thon event, and then aerial map showing the venue, and then obviously answering any questions that you might have at the end. So identity theft is problematic across the nation and is something that affects all people. One of the preventative measures used across the nation is providing assistance for citizens through education, community outreach, shred-a-thons, and public service announcements, to quote our Attorney General's office. A shred-a-thon allows Arizonans to safely and securely dispose their private and sensitive information. So a couple of the statistics here from the Bureau of Justice, an estimated 17.6 million Americans, or 7% of the U.S. residents ages 16 or older, were victims of identity theft in 2014. The number has also risen for elderly victims of identity theft, increased from 2.1 million in 2012 to 2.6 million in 2014. Interesting fact is that in 2017, last year, Goodyear PD investigated 140 cases of identity theft, according to our investigations unit. Many of those happened right around tax time. This is when they find out somebody else has been using their information, and they have to then go through the process of trying to fix their name, so. All right. Other agency overviews, in researching what other agencies have done throughout the Valley, what we learned were that they are not alike. And as you can see on this page, they're kind of all over the place. So some have multiple events. They're usually done in cooler months. So you can see there, Glendale PD has three events, but then Scottsdale Officers Association has nine events, and they do them between September and May. Some are only available to city residents, some are open to all. The length of time ranges anywhere from two to three hours, or until the shred truck is full. So sometimes they end those early, depending if they get that truck filled. Cost ranges are from free to some actually collect a monetary donation, but this is to a nonprofit organization. Obviously, it doesn't go back to their city, but it is donated to a nonprofit. Some limit participation of businesses and others do not. They put a cap on how many boxes you can bring. So with that, we'll be talking a little bit about our proposed event. We are definitely, like I say, very anxious to hear your input in this event. If it is your recommendation to move forward, we are ready. Here are some of the thoughts we put together as a team, and any of these are subject to change if you show desire. So the suggested event would be April 21st to 2018. This is right after Tax Day and also during cooler weather. We suggest a two-hours during the morning and would end early if the truck is full. The location that we discussed will be in the cul-de-sac on 145th Avenue, just south of Van Buren here, so just west of our new PD Ops building there. This would be a free event, no residency requirements, a four-box limit, and no businesses. But I'd like to take a second and speak about that. Although this can be changed to fit any format you would like, there are pros and cons to each of these examples. So an example would be if you did limit it to no residency requirements, this would allow vehicles to proceed and travel through the line quicker and be able to have, be able to get through that line without having to check any IDs or so forth. So people wouldn't be as, as, as long in that line. And in addition, when we first put this PowerPoint together, we thought to not have businesses participate, but with the four-box restriction in place, having businesses participate will not be an impact and be treated like any other citizen. So there's a cap there. The main goal is that they don't bring a semi-truck full of 10 years of, you know, paperwork to drop off to us. So that is the, the main issue there. So staffing would consist of our four, I'm sorry, of our volunteers. This would include our volunteers and police services, our VIPS and explorers, and on-duty officers. So we do estimate that an officer overseeing the operation for safety purposes would be needed, and then a traffic officer overseeing the vehicle traffic, making sure the traffic exiting onto Van Buren is moving or continuing. No other police calls for service will be affected by this event in the city, so all calls will be answered, and there would be no effect for somebody, you know, needing our help out there. So some of the advertising possibilities, we would use our police and city social media webpages, our PD Ops lobby information screen. As people come into our lobby, they'll be able to see that we're holding an event. We would also work very closely with city communications on getting the message out to, to, to the public. So a little bit about the physical process, what would that person go through as they pull up in line? The citizen would stay in their vehicle while in line. Volunteers and explorers would then unload that paper, the paper-sized boxes and dump them into a shredding bin and immediately return those boxes to the citizens so they can depart without any delay. There is no need for them to get out of their vehicle at all, so that's the safest place for them. Right. So a little bit about costs. In researching costs, there are multiple companies that do mobile shredding. The fees have different ranges depending on how many hours or how large the truck is. Some have minimum time and some have maximum time limits. As you can see there, the costs also vary, and some charge by hour and others use a set fee for, for vehicle. So the proposed estimated cost for our event would range from 350 to 600 for the shredding truck services. There is no anticipated staffing overtime costs associated with this, meaning that we're using on-duty personnel, and our volunteers will be, be used also during that time. Since this is our first shred-a-thon event, and we've never had one before, it is hard, obviously, to determine exactly how much of a turnout we will have from the public and also how many or how large of a vehicle would be needed. So without having something to compare to in our community, this would obviously set, set some goals for us if we did have it. All right. So you can see a proposed site here or an aerial view of the PD Ops parking lot area. The shredding station drop-off point would be located in the cul-de-sac at the south end of 145th Avenue. Like mentioned before, the VIPS and explorers would remove up to four boxes from the vehicle, dumping the paper to be shredded into a bin and then returning the boxes back to their vehicle. A traffic officer will monitor the corner of 145th Avenue of Van Buren. This officer will also ensure that vehicles are entering and exiting 145th Avenue safely. As you can see there, there are a couple photos of what it might look like. Obviously, those aren't our events, but you would have a controlled line where people would come out and pop their trunk, or, you know, we would go to the back of their truck, pick up their box. We would put it in recycle bins, and then the truck would shred it on sight. It would go right up and shred it, and they can go on with their lives, so, and know that it's safely and securely done. So that concludes my presentation tonight. I would like to hear any comments and/or answer any questions that you might have. Obviously, if it's your direction to move forward with a city shred-a-thon event, we are ready and we're excited to make it happen. So with that, I'll conclude.
Thank you very much. It's a very clear presentation, Deputy Chief. So, okay, conversation. Councilman Stipp.
I'm not sure that I understood the, the exiting part on, from 144th onto Van Buren. Will there be, will there be someone directing traffic on Van Buren at 145th?
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be an officer, a traffic officer assigned to that location. Obviously, if it doesn't need to be messed with, we won't. We'll let it flow on its own. That's the safest thing for everybody. But if there needs to be, you know, traffic directed to either make a right turn there or if there's a possibility of them making a left, that will all depend on the traffic officer, depending on the scenario and the work, and the workload.
Perfect. And then my second question is, you know, when I brought this idea forward, I'm really excited about it, so I'm anticipating that there'd be a lot of interest in this. My, I guess the only concern that I have is we're only going to do this for two hours and we're only going to have one truck. And one truck does 300 boxes. If, if people, I can't imagine what four boxes of paper look like, because I know we're pretty diligent in my house about it. But it's only 75 people. It doesn't seem like a lot, and especially if we're going to be the only one in the Southwest Valley that does it, and we're not going to be asking for residence-only. We're going to get Avondale and Litchfield Park and, you know, maybe even some folks from Buckeye. I mean, we could get a lot more than just one truckload, and I would hate for our first event to, you know, be so popular that we can't service everybody. So have we thought, how do we, how do we come to just one truck and for two hours?
That is the question. Since we've never had it before, it's very hard to determine when or how much flow we're going to get through that line. But we do know from looking at the other agencies that have done it, they usually also do it for two to three hours at a time. I think the goal that, what we're seeing out there is that maybe multiple events get done throughout the year, so they do them for less times. But this is the beauty about this, there's no set standard on how to do it. So if it is counsel's direction to, to follow up with either another vehicle. If I could go back to our vehicles, as you can see ProShred there, their one truck is 6.5 tons per truck, so that's a pretty large amount compared to the one to two trucks below them at 300 boxes per truck. So they're definitely different sized trucks. But what we do know is that most of the agencies or cities that have been involved have done it for that period of time, the two to three hours. Now, we could be completely different. We could, we could have more people come to ours. We also could have less. That's where that first one will be very important to have.
So based on that comment, I assume then you're going to, you're suggesting to go with ProShred based on the size of their vehicle? Is that, is that who you're, I know we don't approve the, obviously, who you're going to use, but...
Right. We would work with procurement and make sure, obviously, that, that gets vetted properly. But that would be one of the options, is to go that route. As you can see, the other thing that we looked into was the maximum time limit, like easy shredding, they only have a two-hour maximum anyways. So either that truck, truck being full, or half-full, or a third-full, it's going to, it's going to change things also, so.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just, I'm so excited about the event. I want to make sure that it goes off very well and that we don't, you know, have 300 people waiting to get documents shredded, and we can only shred for 100, and now we've got 200 disappointed people. It's, it's better to have overplanned and, you know, and, and have, have, rather than turning people away disappointed. That, that's my only, that's my only issue. Other than that, I'm super excited and can't wait to see what we get.
Before, before I'm going to take Mayor's privilege here and ask the question, so if you consider that the first year we would do it just for Goodyear to find out how many people we have coming in, because they do, are taxpayers here in Goodyear, and I just throw that out to you, so you can discuss that when your questions, all right? So let me just go on this side. Brandon?
Yeah, so, no, I like the idea of it. Can we also, I'm not sure what other, what other cities do, but give them a piece of paper on like cybersecurity also to make sure their online is also for identity theft is also good as well, and then also use it as an opportunity to maybe publicize some of our Goodyear events as well. I think that'd be, while their captured audience in line there wait, and we can give them some information on what's going on around that time in the city. So, just a thought, just two thoughts. So, but I like the, I like the, I like the event. It'd be good. I should take my stuff to a place I got to pay for it, so it'd be nice to have someplace, this option, so.
Absolutely.
Dwayne? Thank you. I'm very excited about it, and I guess a couple of questions as you're feeling your way up through this. These other cities that you're looking at in comparison of how they did it, so one question I have, of these cities, do they all have regular recycling along with, because if somebody's already recycling, they may not have as much to shred, and so that might come into play in some of these cities, was, was one thought. The other, not that this is a total comparison, but when we have our hazardous waste functions, how many people come for those? How many carloads or...
Yeah, I wouldn't be able to answer how many, but...
I mean, I'm just kind of thinking if you were to, they're not apples to apples, but, you know, when people are...
Javier? Yeah. Let Javier come in.
Mayor, council member, I, I don't have the exact numbers, but we have a block of about several hours where continuous flow of vehicles going through.
But you don't know how many cars?
I can get you those numbers, but I don't, I don't have...
I just thought maybe that would help, give some kind of indication, but, okay. Thank you. I think timing is wonderful to have it right after tax season. Not only do citizens and businesses have to hold on to the records for seven years, it'd be nice after April. It'd be nice, again, you know, companies are having, who have fiscal year ends, are going to be finishing their, you know, taxes back, say, October 15th. So if you're also kind of going around the calendar where you know you're hitting it, where people are wanting to get rid of some old documents, those are, are good timings, I was thinking. And as for, I mean, as a businessperson, I can tell you right now, I am thrilled about it and would be one in that line of cars. And I would even be to the point of, hey, you know what? I like the fact that you're putting a cap on it, but if you were to say we're going to put a cap unless you want to pay a couple bucks, I'll spend the money. So, you know, I, I think it's, it's really important, and I think that as to Bill's point, I'd rather, or to Georgia's also, if we only allow it to be Goodyear citizens to, to begin, go larger than too small, then we can at least, you know, gauge how it's going.
Councilman Laura Towne?
I'm going to actually parrot a lot of the information that, that was discussed. I, I like the fact of opening it up to business, because there's a lot of small business owners like me that have some, some filed at home. We do a massive shred at our office, and, and I don't know which one we, it might be ProShed, shred, but one of those actually donates to the Foundation for the Blind, and I'm not sure which one it is. One of them actually works with a nonprofit, and it's really cheap. So I, I could look and let you know for your list as you, as you go, go through that. But I do like the fact, the Goodyear residents, if we have room, I, what I don't want to see is, I, I think what Bill was saying, I don't want to have, it'd be a very successful event, and then we have, you know, people that have got all their documents together. It's like, oh, we don't have room. So I'd rather have the extra space and not use it the first time than not have it. So I think that's good. And on Brandon's point, we have a local business owner here, their business isn't actually in Goodyear, but he lives in Goodyear, Brian Ellison, who did the Lead Academy, and he owns Black Box Consulting, which does a lot of cybersecurity and computer stuff, and I bet if you reached out to him to help with the flyer, I'm sure they would be happy to do it like something points for, because they put computers together. So I, I, that would just be my, he took our lead program. So I think it's a great event, and thanks, Bill, for putting that on our radar.
Councilwoman Vassilla?
A couple of questions if you decide to go with only Goodyear residents. A lot of times, people on their license, I don't know how you're going to check that, because sometimes they may not update, they may have an old address, but they just moved to Goodyear. When you publicly advertise that, will you use other, other forms of ID to make sure that that's a government, if, if that's the decision to limit it to Goodyear? Because, you know, yeah, they could bring their water bill as, as an example, but sometimes they don't have their address on their, on their driver's license, or the correct address. So there's, if you just use that, then you're going to limit to probably the number of people that may be Goodyear residents, because they don't have that on there. So when you do the promotion or the advertisement, you may want to make sure that there's enough coverage on there on the different forms of ID, if that's the direction. Personally, since the, I guess the taxpayers are going to be paying this, I like the first shot out of the gate to be Goodyear residents. I can go either way, but I'd like to see a Goodyear residents, and I'd like to see it probably up to maybe four as opposed to two hours, to make sure you have enough room in there to not turn anybody away for the event type of thing, so. Other than that, yeah, I think it's a good event. We'll only know when, when it's put on to see what kind of input that comes from the outside, but I think your marketing and how you get that information out there is going to be very important as well, so.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Well, I've attended a, one of these events in Pebble Creek that was sponsored by a local real estate company that paid the money, and it was limited only to Pebble Creek residents. And we could bring three boxes, I believe, I don't think we could bring four. But I think it's a wonderful opportunity for us to do this public service to our residents. I would be in favor of having it for Goodyear only to start with. I would suggest possibly a four-hour rather than a two-hour turnaround, and one or two trucks to make sure we could cover everything. I think it's a good thing to do. In fact, I've got some boxes of stuff I need to get rid of from my parents who have been gone 10 years, and I just don't want to get rid of all of the medical records and things into the trash. So I, I thank you for bringing this forward, and I hope we get it on the books and we actually hold it soon, or at least in 2018.
So tell me, have we given you a direction? Because we've talked about just for Goodyear, for the community, so tell us if you are receiving the direction that we're giving, I mean...
Yes, Mayor. Lord, thank you. I would definitely like to follow up here. So it sounds like our, our issue is that we want to stay with Goodyear residents in the first one, at least to find out, you know, how many people we do have. I also know that we're looking at possibly a secondary truck, because we want to have enough space for everybody to be able to shred their, their paperwork. And then in talking about flyers and pamphlets, we do have some flyers and pamphlets on identity theft that we would be passing out, that has either for them to get on to the computer, both in English and Spanish, to have some tips, but then also, you know, what, how to do it and do it the right way if you want to protect your identity. So we do have that available for them. And I didn't have the, the answer, obviously, on how many go through for the hazardous waste, but I will follow up to make sure that we get that answer for you.
I think he has it behind you.
We have, we have an answer here. Javier has it.
So we had a total of 624 vehicles go through in our last event. 474 were Goodyear vehicles.
Wow. That's quite a bit. Bill, you want to add to that before I ask?
Yeah, before we, before we wrap up, if, if we are going to limit this to Goodyear residents only, then I think we have to extend the time, because I think, as you pointed out in your presentation, the amount of time it's going to take, take to check IDs throughout the process, I think that's going to delay what we intended to do, which was shred the documents. So I would just ask that we, you know, consider that as well if we're not, you know, willing to open it up to everybody.
Yes, absolutely. So that line would slow down, and we would have to obviously figure that out, and what documentation is right. Not everybody does change their IDs. I know for the hazmat event, because I personally used it, they were checking driver's licenses, but some places do check water bills.
I think the trash...
That's a very common thing to use, so we'll, we'll definitely look into that also.
And apartment people, I guess they would not have, some, something that their, their rents or something that's showing proof of residency, I guess.
APS bill.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Their electric bill? Yeah, that's true.
And if I may add, because we do Infocus every month, that's a perfect tool to advertise this and put specifically when, where, what you have to have to be able to use it.
Yes, absolutely, and we would work with our communications division. I mean, we have a wonderful communications component, you know, that would help us, and we would work together with them to get that out.
Brandon?
To make sure there's not a, a big barrier. I don't want to bring like five forms of ID and have to, have to get through. So if they say they're Goodyear resident, I say go with it, so, but just to make sure we can at least get the traction moving and, and then go from there, so.
Absolutely, the...
Especially, especially if we're only communicating to Goodyear residents at the beginning anyway, so.
True.
That's just my, my thought, so.
Councilwoman Vassilla?
Just one form of ID will do it, should do it.
Yeah, one form should be plenty.
Anything else? Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to clarify, I didn't hear Deputy Chief Rodriguez mention, is it open to the business community?
You're going to have a speak-up from me, would you please? Thank you.
Did we have agreement that it would be open to the business community?
Yes.
Sure to start with.
That was a definite.
Okay. And then there was an idea about a second event in the middle of October to catch the business fiscal year cycle.
Oh, that was, I mean, that was just a, a suggestion of when people are needing to get rid of certain documentation, that's what I was suggesting. Obviously, after the first event, you guys reassess which thing, so.
Yeah, I think how the first one goes and, and of course, the cost.
Right.
I think we all need to know in the end what the cost was, if it was a little bit more than we had anticipated. But other than that, I think that I like the idea twice a year.
That's cheap advertising for some company.
Okay, yes.
I'll go on record right now that if, if you need more money to do this, my council money that I have available...
That's a spirit.
There you go.
That's all right.
For this or the second one or the third one or whatever.
Yeah, all right. Anything else? You second that. I can see that we're not, we're not voting on... The lawyer didn't hear that. We are not voting on this. We're just giving opinions on this, and I think you all did such a good job. Thank you. So thank you for that great report.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right, we're at 3.2. We're going to see, receive an update on the judicial branch activity for Goodyear Municipal Court for FY '17, as well as the future court initiatives. And we have our Honorable Municipal Judge Michael Simonsen and our Court Administrator, Administrator Crystal McCurry will be presenting.
Yes.
Good evening.
Ms. Mayor, Ms. Vice Mayor, council members, Dan Rorick. I want to wish everyone a happy, healthy, and prosperous New Year.
Thank you.
Hopefully, I can get this started right for our judicial system. You know, there's an old expression about the best-laid plans of mice and men. Sure enough, my ever-faithful and loyal Court Administrator, Crystal, had a beautiful slideshow prepared for us, and first thing I did when I walked in at 8:30 in the morning, I saw this document on my desk, and after a quick perusal, I said, "No, we're starting with this document, because this has all the information that we need for tonight." So we're going to take a look at this document.
All right. You have the floor.
The reason that I find this document so interesting and so compelling, it puts in numbers, a trend that we've seen in court, which is absolutely unmistakable, and that is there's a steep growth in our caseload, in our docket. We are seeing growth over the last two, two and a half fiscal years, however you want to break it down, that is unparalleled in the history of our court. We're seeing growth at a rate that even outstrips what I saw in '99, 2000, and 2001, when we were undergoing... were undergoing an enormous amount of residential growth. And I want to use these numbers, I did some calculations on my own to point this out. We now have one-half of a fiscal year, fiscal year 2018, behind us as of December 31st. Our caseload, as compared to the same six months of last fiscal year, is up almost 50%. It's 48.48% increase, one year over another. And if you compare it to the same six months fiscal year ended 2016, it's up 61.6%. Now, to put a little sharper pencil to it, we are currently averaging, an average, new cases, 1,100, 1,100 new cases a month. That's 13,000 new cases, if you wanted to calculate it mathematically, project it mathematically, 13,200 cases a year. Once again, unprecedented in the history of our court. This is an all-time high. In terms of what we like to refer to as case terminations, it's an internal number that we use to gauge how we're doing internally. For the last six months, we've had almost 7,300 case terminations in one six-month period. And once again, if you compare that to the six months of last year, that's up 40%. It's very clear to me that the reason for this is that you all have seen fit to improve vastly our police department. And what we're seeing in the courthouse is the direct and proximate result... How's that for legal words, Rorick? Huh? You thought I forgot all that, didn't you? Okay, all right. It's called causation, right, Sherri? Am I right? Okay. It is the court language, Sherri. It is the direct and proximally result of what I see as being more effective and more efficient law enforcement. Now, pardon me? No, I'm not done yet. Now, with that in mind, with this causal effect in mind, I see no reason to believe that this is going to change anytime soon. And if it changes, it's not going to go back down to what it was in fiscal year '16 or[785.82][785.82]'17. It's only going to continue to go up. I'd like to give you an example from today and tomorrow. This is an example. Today, on today's docket, we had close to 300 civil traffic arraignment scheduled. Now, there is one good reason for that, okay? It has to do with government's been closed the last two Mondays, Christmas Day and New Year's Day. And so what you're seeing is an accumulation of citations over the course of three Mondays. However, even if you discount that, and you take an average, and you say to yourself, "Okay, these would have been averaged out over three Mondays," you're still looking at between 75 and 100 civil traffic arraignments a day. Again, even averaging it out like that, that's unprecedented in the history of our court. Tomorrow, we do our Criminal Arraignment Day and Criminal Pre-Trial Conference Day. The attorneys will know what I mean by that. But anyway, it's a whole criminal day, morning, afternoon, everything. It's all criminal. Once again, an unprecedented number. Tomorrow morning, we have 50 criminal arraignments cited in one morning. And that has nothing to do with days off, because the last two Tuesdays haven't been holidays. We've held court the last two Tuesdays. And tomorrow afternoon, we have 13 criminal pre-trial disposition conferences, at least seven of which, maybe more, are DUI cases with attorneys, in one afternoon. Once again, the numbers are growing at an enormous rate, and this is what we're looking at here in the courthouse in terms of our challenge. For the last six months, fortunately, we've managed to have a 110% case closure rate, which if you were to compare it with other jurisdictions, is an outstanding case closure rate regardless of the number of cases actually filed in the courthouse. Now, I promised myself I wouldn't go over time like I did last time I appeared before you.
I will probably monitor you for that tonight, because you have a 6 o'clock meeting. Yes.
I hope you will. I know I can count on you.
Yes, just watch my lips, you'll see it.
Just a couple of quick things.
Can I pull the presentation to match?
Yeah.
Lani, can we have the presentation? Thank you so much.
During the past year, we've had three internal promotions. We promoted Janet to Court Specialist III. Priscilla Pena has been promoted to Court Supervisor, taking what was Crystal's previous position. And Crystal has been promoted to Court Administrator, taking what had been Eddie's previous position. Now, we had two of our staff volunteer for the Arizona Court Supervisor Program, and they both made it through and graduated. One is our newest hire, Danielle, and one is Priscilla Pena, who's been with us for many years. And of course, Crystal stepped up to the plate and took our Arizona Court Executive Program, and she is now a Certified Arizona Court Executive. So I called Crystal out for that, and I thank Crystal for that. Likewise, our interpreter took the Arizona Court Interpreter Credentialing Program and was successful in that program. And as I always do, I try to maintain my judicial education by occasionally attending not just State of Arizona programs, but also programs sponsored by the National Judicial Now, before we skip to the next slide, I casually encountered some of you out in the hall a couple of hours ago, which was very nice. I wasn't exactly dressed for the occasion, but it was very nice. And inquiry was made with regard to my intention to retire. So I just want to reinforce, as I believe I stated last February, I do intend that this will be my last contract. I do understand my contract expires sometime in the middle of February next year, 15th or 16th, whatever it is. Mr. Massey probably knows or can find out, but it's something like that. I mention this because I want to assure everybody, it will be my personal and professional goal during the next 13 months to make sure that this court is in pristine condition for whoever is fortunate enough to be your next presiding judge. It's my personal and professional intention that your next presiding judge can hit the ground running and not have the inherited mess... Sherri was referring to this earlier, not having the inherited mess that I had in 1999. All right? Okay. So I just want to assure you, despite the enormous growth and a little bit of chaos, this court is going to be in perfect order for your next presiding judge. Okay. I want to talk a little bit about the E-Citation Project. This is a project that we have had pending now for a while with our PD, of course, and some vendor. I'm never quite sure exactly where this project stands. I suppose I could ask either the chief or Mr. Massey, maybe one or both of those gentlemen know, but I don't know. But I just want to assure you, as city government, the court still has our, if you will, $50,000 available that we had requested and been granted from what's called the JSEF fund. So the $50,000 is still there. The issue is, my understanding on this is also that there's some kind of a deadline at the end of this fiscal year. I'm not sure why there's a... I'm not sure if it's just because it's the end of a fiscal year, or if there's something in a potentially pending contract or what it is. Again, yeah, as Crystal points out, it may be that if we haven't applied that $50,000 to the project by then, we may have to remit that $50,000 back to the Administrative Office of the Supreme Court, which I don't want to do, and I don't believe that's in the best interest of law enforcement and the courts here in our city. What's in the best interest of law enforcement and the courts and the people at Goodyear is to do this E-Citation Project and use the $50,000 for it. So I admit, I don't know exactly where we stand on it. It seems to have been dragging out, it seems to me like for years, and it just never seems to actually get anywhere. So I don't want us to lose the money, is the bottom line of my comment. Just a couple other things. Our court continues to participate, along with many other municipal courts, in both the Stand Downs for Veterans Program and the Stand Up for Veterans Program. And of course, we participate with Maricopa County in the Regional Homeless Court. And we've been participating with our library, our City of Goodyear Library. They involve some of our youth in mock trial scenarios.
Saw that, yes.
Yes, yes. So we're very happy to host them here in the courthouse and to do whatever we can to make that an educational and positive experience for our youth. Just to update you on our home confinement, our home detention program, as most of you will probably recall, we were among the first of the municipal courts to pioneer a home confinement program. For the most recent full fiscal year, ended June 30th, we actually sentenced to 64 defendants to home confinement. They were serving in total 1,056 days of jail time. Most of these were DUI defendants who were sentenced to that jail time because the jail time is mandatory under State of Arizona law. And again, I know both legal counsel understand this to be the case. Anyway, if you calculate this out mathematically, this home confinement program for the past fiscal year saved our city almost $121,000 in jail costs.
That's great.
As far as Crystal could calculate the specific number, if you want it, $120,852.16 in saved jail costs. Okay, how am I doing on time?
It's 5:43.
Okay. Do you want me to be quiet now and take questions and comments, or what was your prefer, Mayor?
Well, I'm going to ask the council. Questions, or you'd like him to continue?
Follow.
Love.
Okay.
Just a minute, I didn't get this side. Fine, go ahead. Go forth.
As long as we have time for questions.
Okay, all right, then we need time for question. Do you want to ask that question now? Because I can't judge how long the answer will be, or... So go ahead, we're going to take a little pause here, and then let her ask the question and come back to you talking some more. All right, go ahead.
I've got a couple of questions. Does our court operate five days a week?
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Monday through Friday?
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Do we have a night court yet?
No, ma'am, we do not.
All right. And while I can appreciate that the caseload is increasing, the population of this city has increased tremendously.
Yes, it has.
And crime is coming more to the West Valley, and I'm very grateful that our police are out there writing these citation and arresting these people.
Absolutely.
And if it's necessary to get another judge in another larger court, you know, we'll do what we need to do, but I would rather see these high numbers and know we're doing something to protect the public than to tell us, you know, crime is going away, because it's not going away.
No, it's not.
And everything's more violent now, so...
Yes, unfortunately, it's all true. It's all true. Crime is increasing on this side of the valley. The crime is more violent. We're seeing an increase in domestic violence cases. In fact, the first six, the first six months of this fiscal year, we averaged almost a new domestic violence case every day, an average of 29 a month. Again, it's unheard of in the history of Goodyear. It's unheard of. And for that matter, just parenthetically, in the first six months of this fiscal year, we originated 277 new DUI cases. That's an average of 46 a month, almost one and a half a day or a night, however you want to look at it. So I can't tell you how much I share your concern. I think you're really a step ahead of the game when you talk about a possible associate judge, a possible night court for a couple of hours, maybe only once a week. I'm completely on board. The one thing, of course, that follows is, we would need a couple of extra staff.
Sure.
Yeah. But yeah, I think you're ahead of the game.
Councilor Vazillo?
Just to follow up on that, based on your current pace, the way things are going right now, how long is it going to take before you're going to need either a Saturday session or night court? If we continue at the same pace we're going now?
If we continue with the same pace, I would say about a year.
Okay. Second question. I like the home referral, because it saves us money in jail time and et cetera. And your opinion, how would you rate that from a success standpoint?
Well, I think it's extremely successful. Number one, I start from a baseline, and I believe I've expressed this in the past, I'm not a big proponent on jail time for misdemeanor offenses like we handle here. I'm not a big proponent of it. State law mandates certain jail time for certain types of offenses like DUIs, and so as a judge, my hands are tied. The state legislature has said you must give this much jail time for this. Where my discretion comes in, coupled with the discretion of the prosecutor's office to some extent, is how much of that jail time must be in the county jail versus how much of that jail time can we do home confinement? Okay? So for example, if somebody is sentenced to a mandatory minimum DUI sentence of 10 days with nine possibly suspended if they take the substance abuse class, according to state law, they have to do that one day in the county jail. I cannot, I cannot sentence them to home confinement for that day. But if you're looking at an aggravated sentence, let's say an extreme DUI or a second offense, and you're sentencing them to 45 days with only 31 suspended, now you've got 14 days of jail time to play with. Well, the prosecutor's office, the position they take, and I don't disagree with it, is that the first 20% of those 14 days, basically three days, need to be in county. After that is eligible for home confinement. Now, I don't know that that's the law, that's the position that our prosecutor's office takes, and I generally respect that position. On the other hand, I may have discretion to say, "Well, you'll do your first 24 hours in the county jail, and after that, do the entire remaining 13 in home confinement." I may have the discretion to do that. The downside of that from my standpoint is, each time I do that, I will probably receive an objection from the prosecutor's office. Does that sound right, Rorick? Does that sound right, Rorick? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm just saying, some things are discretionary. For example, let me give you one more example. I don't believe in jail time for somebody that got a, driving on a suspended license ticket and can't pay their fine. I don't believe that person is a violent criminal necessarily because they, they didn't pay some traffic ticket in the past, and their license got suspended, and they got caught driving on a suspended license. I don't necessarily believe that's the type of criminal, if you will, that belongs in the county jail. So, if I order jail time on something like that, A, it would be an extreme situation where they've just blown it off for years, and B, it would be home confinement.
Okay, thank you.
Is that any answered, Joe?
Yes.
And now, I'm going to interject. Is there anything else that you feel pertinent that you want to present in the next five minutes that you need to do? Crystal?
I know there was a page at the end that you wanted to cover. Why don't you go ahead?
Sure, we'll skip to that. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, the last slide, this one is really important to myself, because I really can't give enough credit to the work that's been done by court staff. When Judge Simonsen shows you these numbers, it's really the staff that have kept us afloat and kept us from having a, an unfavorable case closure rate. When we look at these filings coming in, and on top of being able to manage this workload, we've had the biggest transition in the court that we have ever experienced since, ever, I think. We got a new case management system in August this year, and it really kind of turned our world upside down, where it took a process, where we were experts on the case from filing to closure, and we left work one day and came back not knowing how to enter a case the next day, and so, it was very stressful. And so, on top of being able to relearn how to operate in our database and all the work involved in that project, we've still found time somehow to come up with goals together as an organization, spend time doing team building, and really talk about, like how Judge, Judge Simonsen mentioned, having our court in a really great position for the transition of a new presiding judge. And so, this, the last fiscal year, we worked on a lot of things related to, there's been a lot of change in the judicial branch. Fair Justice Task Force initiatives have had a huge impact on the court, and teaching judges and court staff a new way to look at cases and how sentencing is imposed, and how we help our defendants, and think of outside of the box, if you will, such as when we implemented new payment options for our court customers. We really have a customer service mindset when we help folks. And so, we really, E-Citation is one of the things on the forefront that we're hoping so long as funding is there. We want to have increased participation in educational opportunities, such as we went out to the career, Community Career Classic at Desert Edge last month and talked with students, you know, and, and tried to give them a little bit of insight about the judicial branch and career opportunities. We're still working on the after-effects of our software conversion. Security, I know as I spoke to you guys last fiscal year, and we now have our guard securities on the forefront of important goals for the court. And all of these things listed, including our Self-Help Center, which is a project that will be hopefully finished in the next six weeks now we're talking about, all of these things are going to be incorporated. And when we have the time to sit down and really put on paper our strategic plan, our operational plan, our security plan, we're working soon on doing bold planning. We've been, you know, there's just been a lot going on, but the nice thing is that court staff are willing, they're energetic, and we have a really great team, and the court is really, I think, on the right path.
Well, let me add, first of all, Crystal, congratulations during your promotion.
Thank you.
And being your certification. And you can see what an assistant you've been to the judge by what you've just talked about and the goals that you're bringing forth. And Judge Simonsen, we do appreciate the work you do. We're proud to have had you in the court until your retirement.
Thank you.
And we appreciate, sometimes, questions we ask sort of maybe are a little the point where you think that we're not supporting you, but we are, but they're doing their job as council members, so I'm pleased that. So, we, is there anything else, Crystal, before I call this?
I will take 30 seconds, because when you mention the things that council does for us, I think it is important that we talk about, for the public to know that, you know, the court does do a tough job, but we also offer a lot of services that are made available by council's approval. The fact that we can, we have a budget to help fund court-appointed council for people that cannot afford it, that we provide language services for almost every language, which is a huge project for us. We just revamped our website. We did a language access plan. We have new signage in the courtrooms and the lobbies. It's posted on our website. We're working on translating forms. So, that's a big thing that the public probably doesn't realize, that courts offer that service free, free to them. The Self-Help Center is new. Jury management, that's at a cost to the courts that, you know, our city is able to offer to the public. We pay to put on a jury trial, so that we people are afforded that right. And security, that's a really big thing, too, that we're working on. So, I think that folks don't generally think about the things courts offer for them, and so, I just wanted to mention that as well.
Well, in order to be, just to substantiate that, I'm going to suggest that we do, and then focus on that information you just gave, on what we offer the citizens and those non-payment programs that will help them progress. So, let's make sure you're getting that information to the staff on that. So, finally, we appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you.
And I'm going to adjourn this meeting?
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. I'm going to wait till they... Thank you.
Happy New Year.
I hope your holidays were wonderful. All right, I'm going to adjourn this meeting, and then we're going to have a regular meeting, and we'll talk about, once we bring that to order, maybe we can have a short break if you need it. So, this meeting is adjourned.